On Tuesday, June 28th, I will call to order the Committee on City Services and the North Hampton City Council. I am Councilor Lauren Carney, Chair of this committee, and I'll ask the administrative assistant to call the rolling please.
Councilor Bidwell?
Here.
Councilor Carney?
Present.
Councilor LeVard?
Present.
Councilor O'Donnell?
Here.
Okay, thank you. I'll ask first if there's public comment for this meeting. Okay, seeing none, I'll ask if there's a motion to approve the minutes of June 7th.
Motion.
Yes, I agree.
You moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Okay, no extensions. That motion carries. And so we have on the agenda today Mayor Knutwitz to report on implementation plans regarding the 2015 parking stuff. So I'll turn it over to Mayor.
Sure. Yes, good afternoon, members of the committee. Thanks for this opportunity to just give you kind of update on the Walker Parking Study, which was completed last year. And just trying to give you a quick overview of how we're sort of approaching the several different recommendations. And if you, I don't know if you have the study or refer back to the study, but it's on our website. But there's, there were several recommendations. Some of them were kind of very specific regulatory. Some of them were capital related. Some of them were kind of more long-range planning kinds of, kinds of recommendations. So, and part of what we're trying to do is several of them are kind of all integrated. So for example, one of the recommendations that came out of the study was the, was to really look at improving our signage and our parking signage and our wayfinding signage in downtown. People not, not knowing where parking was located, not knowing, for example, that there's a new spaces over by the, by the police deck at night after six, which is all public parking after hours. Not necessarily when they come into town. Some of our signage is a little bit dated and old. And so, long story short, as you may recall, in this capital plan, or the capital plan that we developed, you know, last, last fall and then submitted this spring to you as part of the Capital Improvement Program, we had a number of projects, including one up to hire a wayfinding and signage design consultant, which was approved, as well as some funding to actually implement that plan. So we have actually hired a firm. Their name is Faberman Design. They're quite well regarded in this particular field. Locally, they've worked most recently with Amherst and Greenfield. They've also done work with Ipswich, with Winchester, Brookline, as well as larger clients like the Boston Red Sox. And they're, what they'll be doing, and we're going to be pulling together kind of, I guess it's called like an IDA, IDA group, I guess is the terminology that was used, which is pulling together some staff, pulling together some key community people and to sort of work with them. They've already been in North Hampton, kind of taking a look around, trying to get a, trying to develop some ideas and some themes for, for that. And so our hope is that that's going to, they're going to give us some recommendations on, on signage that we can then begin to implement. Sort of, I brought some examples, just to give you a quick flavor of it. They, they, this was the work they did in Ipswich, and they kind of looked at some of the historic features of the community. Ipswich, they had the Choak Bridge, which I guess is one of their more famous, you know, famous landscapes. And so they've kind of created this, this thing, Ipswich Bridging History. And then basically, they then go from there and create all the parking signage, all of the wayfinding signage, all of the signage for, you know, we've even asked them to look at could we replace sandwich boards with something a little less intrusive as a way to kind of direct people, not only to attractions, but also how to find parking, how to find transportation, how to find government buildings, et cetera. So, and, and they've given us other examples of, you know, Situate and Brookline and other things like that. So that's, that's sort of the thing that they do, and that was one of the recommendations that the study put forth. And so we're moving ahead on that. The other piece that we're working on is the technology upgrades. And you may recall that last year, we did the upgrade to the parking garage and moved over to the new credit card system, pay-on-foot credit card system, which has been working quite well. We have far fewer glitches and complaints. You know, there's always a learning curve for people. And people are utilizing the credit card functionality. I think we're seeing like almost 50% of customers are, are using plastic instead of, instead of money. So it's a convenience thing for people. So you may also recall that we have money in the capital budget to also do upgrades to our kiosks downtown. And we are in the final phases of the, of the process there for procurement of upgrading our kiosk systems to be able to accept credit cards. Those are the, those are out on the street. What do we have, like 25 of them or something? I can't remember the number. Between, you know, on-street and some of our lots. So the idea would be to get those deployed, hopefully, this, early this fall. And so that we can begin offering credit card technology or debit card technology to customers there. The other thing that that then kind of ties into is making some of the regulatory changes that were recommended. Because I would like to time, what I'm hoping to do is time the regulatory changes with the implementation of the new kiosks. Because every time we make a change to one of our kiosks, there's like a, basically it's like a $500 charge to reprogram it. So I'd rather have everything kind of happen at once, where we're switching over the kiosk and switching the time and hour changes. So my plan is trying to look ahead to when that procurement will happen, would be to submit to the city council, probably at your August meeting, so that it can get referred out, so that we can sort of begin this conversation in September after later than several of the regulatory changes that have been recommended. Not all of the regulatory changes. I'm actually going to put forward most of the basic ones is my intent. And I think there's some others I think need a little further thought, and I've been talking to people around, around the city and just trying to get some feedback on. And so for sure, my plan is to move forward the time changes for Main Street, for Gothic Street, and for the Masonic Street Lot, which were fairly basic, you know, moving our one-hour to two-hour meters. And then the, the, the meter lots in both the Masonic Street and Armory Street, increasing those to three hours. And those are fairly straightforward, I think. And so that, that's, that's on the, that's what I'm planning to do for that. We've really, we've talked a lot internally. We've had a lot of discussions with PEO and, you know, Nancy's here, who some of you know from Transportation and Parking, but she's our key parking person, Nancy Forrestall. She's the Assistant Treasurer Collector now, who oversees the parking enforcement. And so one of the things we've talked about a lot internally is this idea of shifting the time, but only for Main Street. And it sounds good in theory, but there's been just some concerns about how it would play out to have only one, one part of our parking system have a timeframe that goes from, you know, until eight o'clock, but the rest of it all ends at six o'clock. And whether that would be more confusion than not, whether the benefit would outweigh, you know, the added confusion that may entail. Obviously staffing would be, you just have to have extra staffing for that one section. So my, my initial thought is to move it forward maintaining the current time zones. That's, those are, that's my current thinking on it. So that is, those are sort of the main regulatory changes that they recommended. They did recommend long-term looking at our pricing in the garage. Particularly as we start to try to do other upgrades or think about other structures, they felt that longer term, we should start looking at pricing in the garage. And then the other, the other key piece of the, of the study was to begin exploring potential new parking in the city, both municipal as well as the possibility for private-public partnerships. They did outline a number of private lots in the city that they felt were, that perhaps could be more utilized. So we have begun some conversations with, with some of those folks. One in particular is Verizon because of the Masonic Street Lot and the fact that there's sort of that Verizon facility which has, seems to have some excess parking capacity that's adjacent to our Masonic Street Lot. So we've had some pretty high-level conversations with them and their real estate team. And unfortunately, it got a little bit delayed because of the strike that happened over the last couple of months. Because most of those people that I was meeting with were suddenly putting on hard hats and I think going back out of the field during the strike. So, so we're hoping to potentially look at some ways where we could potentially expand the Masonic Street Lot, potentially through a lease agreement with Verizon to add some additional space to that lot, which would be good because that side of Main Street needs some, needs additional space. And then the other piece, we're doing some design, we're, we're working with Ty and Bond, who's looking at the Roundhouse Lot and doing a study for us to see whether or not we could, by better striping of a lot or more efficient use of a lot, be able to increase our parking capacity there. Particularly as Plasky Park will expand and take away some of the current parking. And then finally, we're also working on that longer-term look at potential parking garage sites, which Walker touched on very peripherally, very briefly in the report. They mentioned it. They talked a little bit about the Masonic Street Lot as a potential, but we are working with them to sort of drill a little bit deeper down and begin looking at other potential longer-term. You know, they basically recommended we should start the planning process, knowing how long it takes to bring a system like that online. So we've begun that process as well. So the, the key stuff that's sort of imminent would be this convergence of new technology, new signage, and new time limits, which would all be happening, hopefully, around the same time. And so, you know, for example, right now, we have all the signs on Main Street that say one hour, you know, parking. And obviously, it'd be great if we were going to, if and when we switch that, or if the council approves switching that, we perhaps, hopefully, would have some signage ready to go that we could install at the same time. So we're trying to kind of coordinate the technology, the change, the regulatory changes, as well as, as well as, you know, the, yeah, the technology regulations and the signage, so that they would all kind of arrive at the same time, hopefully. We may have to do some, we may have to do some temporary signage in the meantime. But we do have funding in the budget, in the capital project budget for not only the design phase, but then actually the implementation phase for the signage. And that's not, you know, a very highly complicated thing to do. They're also going to be taking a look at our existing signage to see if there's signage we should be removing, just signage that's superfluous or that is unnecessary. The main thing we're hoping for is that when people come to the city, they can sort of feel comfortable. They can sort of feel like, you know, they kind of know where there's parking signage. They can sort of understand there's a theme to the parking signage. You know, kind of when you go to Boston or a bigger city, there's the ubiquitous blue parking sign. You just kind of know, you see one of those signs, okay, there's going to be a parking garage nearby. And so we're trying to work on something like that, but also something that sort of fits into the character of North Hampton as well. So that will be an interesting project. Amherst finished theirs. They haven't done the implementation yet. Greenfield did sort of a smaller-scale version. They haven't done the implementation yet. You know, we got the funding for both the planning and the implementation, so I don't think we're going to see a delay. I hope we won't have a delay. We're going to try to move forward once we get to go ahead on the, on the signage. So I think those are, that's kind of the quick overview of where we are. And again, timing-wise, the, the, we've got a lot of the vendor, most, all vendor information. We're doing some due diligence. The other interesting thing that's happening from Nancy's perspective is that September, we also bid, it's time to, the contract ends on their handheld devices, the Complus system that we use for the PEOs. So there's also some great synergy there of making sure that what we get for them syncs up with the newer technology that we're looking at for the kiosk system. And we are exploring not only the traditional pay, you know, put your little ticket in the window, but some of the ticketless ones as well. The report talked about the license plate system, which we're, we're looking at and trying to understand. There's only a couple of communities that have been experimenting with that. The only other option is to pay by space. I don't really see that as being as feasible for us, pay by numbered space. I know Amherst has moved to that. But I, I just think that might work in a lot. But I, I already took out all the signposts on Main Street, so to go back and put little signposts everywhere with numbers on it and to paint numbers just doesn't seem feasible. So we are, we are making sure we're testing all the different possibilities. So that's kind of where we are.
Okay. Any questions? Point for members.
Was there talk of restriping the Masonic Street Lot at some point as well?
There was, there was a-
Did you require a few more cars?
Yeah, there was talk of looking at, well, they actually mocked up like a garage. They also mocked up if you could somehow assemble the Verizon Lot and the TD Bank North Lot, you could have like a better flow of traffic like in one way and out the other way. We did, we, we've had conversations with all of those property owners. At this point, the, well, the, the, what is it called? The Church Scientist Building was on the market when we started talking about it. Now it's been sold and have pricing the construction fence all around it. So that parking is kind of not really in play, I don't think, at this point. And, and so Verizon sort of seems like the best, the most viable one right now. So the plan would be that if we did secure some extra real estate, then we would then try to look at how best do we restripen it. It's a little bit challenging. We have those dumpsters, which are kind of critical for those businesses in that part of, of back there. So there'd have to be some coordination of those. That does limit it a little bit. But if we got a little more breathing room on the Verizon side, that could allow, well, definitely allow us to add more spaces, but it might change the way we reconfigure that lot.
Okay. So you couldn't reconfigure it unless you had new adjacent, meaningfully?
Right now, it's, it would be very difficult to do. It's pretty tight the way it's configured right now. And to keep that kind of circular flow, because it's really just one entrance in and one entrance out. We try to discourage people using Cracker Barrel, and if we move towards some kind of a park, that will be even more important if, if access through Cracker Barrel is closed off. So that'll be, so circulation in that lot, that's a really important lot because it's that side of Main Street.
Right.
And I'm hoping signage maybe will help some of those patterns as well. Because that was the, you know, if you read through the study, you know, there's certain, like the Roundhouse Lot, you know, full to capacity during the day. At night, maybe not so much. And, and so there is kind of a shift that happens. So between the park improvements, the lighting improvements, that, you know, perhaps that will make people feel like, if I want to go to Packers, I can park in the Roundhouse Lot and just, you know, walk through Plasky Park or whatever it is. If I want to go to the parlor room or the Iron Horse or whatever, I can do that. So, so we're hoping that a combination of all of these things will make the parking system work user-friendly. And we're also looking at several app, you know, smartphone applications as well, including some that might sync up with our, with our kiosk system. So we are looking at that. That was one of the other recommendations. They recommended having a college student designing an app. That's all good and well, and I'm sure we can. I know that Brian Foot's working on a new downtown cultural district app, you know, for, for events downtown. He's working with some students on that. But we really want something that would integrate with our parking system. For example, one of the things we've talked about is because the parking garage now has this new, you know, pretty much real-time system that's, you know, wireless and we get pretty much real-time data on the, on the occupancy of the garage. There's a potential we could work on signage that could give people an update, like, you know, there's still vacancies in the garage. You know, we could have an interactive sign that says, you know, there's still 50 spaces in the garage. Again, people that might be coming around the New Roundabout and coming into North Hampton, you know, on Pleasant Street for a concert. If you could say to them, there's, you know, 50 free spaces in the garage, maybe they would just go right there. As opposed to, you know, driving around King Street or, you know, trying to park in Jack Finn's parking lot or, you know, whatever it is, you know, trying to do for parking for a show. So we're also going to look at some of that technology if, as we start to move toward more real-time. Because, you know, the, the kiosks we have right now are just kind of solitary, single actors. They don't, they're not connected to each other, and they just dispense a ticket. And that's how you know what the parking, you know, we can obviously run reports on how many tickets were sold and all that kind of stuff, but when you move to the wireless, then it becomes real-time. You can actually start to track possibly how much vacancies you have. So, anyway.
Great.
So that's the update. Questions?
So that's the, for example, an app that, as, as you're approaching North Hampton, where, where are the parking spaces?
Yes. Also, also some of the systems we're looking at, you could pay for parking on an app. You wouldn't even have to go to the kiosk. You could just pay on your app. So that's, that's something we're looking at as well. And they, those often integrate with your parking, those often provide an app for you. They even have a where's my car parked feature for people to park and they can't remember where they parked. So there's, so yeah, so we are looking at those kinds of things. You could also theoretically add time if you were someplace and you, and you were running short on time. You could also potentially add time. So, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to look at stuff, look at technology that will hopefully be more efficient, but also improve the customer experience as well.
Okay. You mentioned something about 50% are using credit cards.
Yeah.
Are we having a problem getting money with some of the people's credit cards?
No.
They're not bouncing or anything?
Nothing I'm aware of. No, I mean, and, I mean, keep in mind, ours are fairly low-dollar transactions. I mean, most of our parking, most of our transactions in the garage are a dollar. You know, probably the, the largest subset of them are a dollar, maybe a dollar fifty. So, so generally, I don't have any-
No problem.
No problems at all? Yeah.
Very, very few.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah. I mean, we're paying fees, but that's sort of, we understood that.
Wow.
And so, but that's just the cost of our offering that service to people. So, yeah.
So any, any, any further talk about use of outlined private garage? Either for the, whenever there should happen to be a show at the Calvin. You know, this five dollar for a valet kind of thing, or for worker parking?
Yeah. No, I think part of, part of what we are looking at doing is, you know, you know, part of it's the signage issue to try to improve, you know, people knowing where that extra parking is. You know, the, I know there was a, there was a mention of the worker parking in there. It was kind of specific to the Hair Academy on Pleasant Street, which was one of the main ones. Marinella, that we're hearing a lot of complaints about. That was kind of some feedback that they got from them. I think that's the running shop now. I don't think the Hair Academy's there anymore. Again, I think that there's, I think that there's parking, I think some of it's education. I think some of it's education on businesses, looking at ways that we can sell, you know, make sure people know about the parking pass system, trying to, you know, provide opportunities and options for people for worker parking. And not do what, they did find in some cases where employees are parking in prime parking on Main Street. There's not really any way we can, we can enforce that per se. Part of it's just going to have to be a collaboration with the business community to make sure that that parking is available for customers. But we are going to be looking, part of the whole issue of looking at future garage locations, we'll be looking at some of our sites, potentially private sites, that could be a place for work-standed parking in the future. So we will be looking at that with Walker.
Remember, there's a conversation at the Center for the Arts Parking Lot as well?
Yeah.
Which is pretty substantial if you drive back there.
Definitely.
And length is any-
And we, they're one of the people that I've had some preliminary conversations with. They're, I don't know that they're quite there yet as they finish their construction project, but we have talked a little bit about the possibilities, especially since it's sort of that part of downtown. I know they're already renting some spaces to click workspace.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
So that's kind of an example where the city didn't even have to get involved.
Yeah, right, right.
Another example, recently, we've been doing some work with some property owners on King Street. It's just kind of on the edge of the Central Business District to help, to work by working with, putting them in touch with some other businesses who have excess parking capacity to find parking for, you know, for workers to be able to accommodate a new business. And I know there's some changes made to the on-street parking as well on King Street. I think we're going through the Transportation Parking Commission. This would be in front of the former Hamlin Furniture Store.
Right, okay.
Yeah, on, on King Street. So, so in some cases, it may be that we're just trying to help facilitate some conversations, you know, among businesses, but we're also actively pursuing other opportunities.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the Center for the Arts Lot is kind of like the, the universe of the Roundhouse, because I would think it would be filled during the evening.
Especially if you could work on, again, the signage and, you know, people that were coming from Amherst for a show, maybe a show, well, you know, obviously a show at 33 Holly Street, but, but stuff happening on that at the Main Street. There's definitely some potential there. Again, whether that's them doing it in an entrepreneurial way themselves and like some of our property owners do, or whether they would want to enter into a partnership with the city to do it, like a ground lease arrangement or something, similar to when we have a Union Station during the daytime. So there's, those are all things we're, we're trying to be open to as we look around to find additional parking. I also, you know, I also think that a big part of it is educational as well.
Right.
And I don't, you know, I don't, if you have a guy or parking crunch right now, parking emergency. In some cases, just, I think doing a better job of telling people where there is available parking would be helpful. You know, we routinely go to bigger cities and happily walk four or five, six blocks to go to places. And we have a pretty small, compact downtown, so even, you know, parking at, parking at the Roundhouse to go to, you know, the Calvin or something like that is, the garage is certainly not a very long walk. But people coming to town, if they don't know where the garage is, or they don't know, or don't want to take a chance to go all the way over there to find that it's full, you know, if they were able to look at an app or look at a sign and say there's spaces, then we might start to draw some people there, so.
And the only other question, the only other question was, do you have any thoughts about residential streets at this time? Because I know we included a couple on the periphery, kind of near the Center for the Arts, for example.
Yeah.
Phillips Place is kind of the one I'm thinking of.
Yeah.
Or maybe that's for the future. It's a longstanding problem.
Yeah, I think it's for the future. I think as that neighborhood develops out between, you know, the Independent, New England Independent Living Project- the, um, independent, New England Independent Living Project, um, you know, on Holly Street. As that develops out, as 33 Holly Street develops, as we see what happens with Click Workspace, I assume there's going to be a little more pressure in those neighborhoods. Um, whether it's residential, whether it's, I'm not sure what, what the solution is. I think we'll just have to kind of be, be willing to look at that as it starts to come. They did, I mean, they took a look at it. They did call it out as an issue.
Right, right.
They didn't really offer, they said, look at, you know, the traditional stuff like look at, um, you know, residential only or, you know, which we have on our books, but we haven't really used very much. Other than Kensington, I think, and Year Award. Um, but, so, yeah.
Okay. Uh, you, you, you mentioned Union Station. Any, uh, progress in the, I mean, as I hear the complaint? Um, and I've, I've just heard one side of it.
Yeah.
That is that it's true that, that the rights to the lot revert to Union Station at six o'clock.
Very clear. And we have very clear signage about it.
Right. But the complaint that I've heard, and I haven't independently checked this out, is that, yes, they have rights, but if there's still a lot of cars in there for the next two, three hours, then that doesn't mean they can actually use it. And I, I don't, I don't know to, to what extent that's been really explored and.
It has been explored and we've had, um, conversations with them. We've made some modifications, um, to the lot. Um, and the, but the other piece is we've been, I don't want to go into too much of our private discussions, but, um, the ball has been in their court for some time, um, to look at a possible solution to that. Um, and, um, I keep reminding them that the ball is in their court. Um, but I also keep hearing people standing up and being saying the city's not doing anything. So, um, I'll be, I'll be continuing to remind them of that. The fact of the matter is, is that, you know, it's, we have a, there's an agreement that predated me, that predated the current ownership. Uh, it's pretty clear. We have very clear signage that tells people that after six, it's a private lot. Um, we actually don't have the right to tow people after six because it's not our lot anymore. I think they would prefer that we go in and tow those people out of anybody that, that didn't pay them and stayed as in the lot, that they prefer that we tow them. We actually don't have the right to tow them anymore than we have the right to go to Rich Cooper's lot and tow somebody or, uh, because it's a private, it's a private lot at that point.
It's our ability to pay by kiosk, but it only goes until six o'clock?
There is a kiosk that only goes till six o'clock. Yeah, we, that's how we, that's how we pay right now. Um, that's how it works right now. And then they take over management of the parking after that. So, um, so we're trying to, we've taught, we've, we've had conversations about trying to find ways to do possibly some joint management. Um, and I'll just reiterate that, um, we've had conversations, um, but the ball is in their court. And so we're willing to hear potential proposals. So, but we have a lease. The lease is still runs for many, many years. The city, uh, you know, received that lease in compensation for significant capital work that it did on the lot. And, um, so I'm, I'm upholding it and, but also trying to work with them. Obviously, I understand when they have huge events, um, that they need parking for that. So we're completely open to working with them on that. There's also going to be a little, a further piece on the Amtrak, uh, because the, um, that, the whole issue of the platform is not fully settled yet because there's going to be yet another expansion of the platform. Um, right now, the temporary platform is serving what it's serving, but the longer term plan is to extend that platform. Uh, so there's going to be another phase of construction. Um, so that'll, that will also be another opportunity to look, to relook at some of those issues as well.
I just have one more quick question if you, if you want me to respond more.
Sure.
Um, when you think about this long-range project of possibility of additional parking garage, hmm? Or in your mind, is this seven, eight years down the road by the time you've studied, funding, actually getting there?
Um, I will say that it's, uh, there's not a lot of, uh, ready funding for these projects right now. Um, as my colleague at Greenfield, Mayor Martin is, knows full well. He's got a, he's got a really interesting situation because the, um, the court just built this huge addition onto the back of the courthouse, um, basically into the, what was the parking lot. Um, so they've just done this huge, beautiful new Franklin and Perry sort of combined justice center. Um, and so, uh, they, so they really are concerned about backfilling all the parking that was lost where, where basically where the new center was built. So they've been working through the Mass Works program, um, and through some other programs. You know, there is funding available, um, through Mass Works primarily. I know they're doing some work with Worcester, uh, parking garage. Um, uh, we also obviously have the capacity to bond and use parking revenue like we did with the first garage. Um, so it would be a, it would definitely be a multi-year process, not to mention if there's land acquisition involved as well. Um, so, yeah, it's, but it's, but, you know, their advice was, you don't, you know, you don't need one right now, but you should start planning for one, particularly as we see new housing developments happening on Pleasant Street. As we see, you know, more housing on Holly Street, more people wanting to live, you know, closer to downtown, um, that we want to start looking at that. So that's what we're doing. We are, and again, I'll also say, you know, we're also working to try to make downtown more, uh, bikeable and walkable for those of you who came to the complete streets demonstration. Um, because to the extent that we, that for the majority of our city population that lives within a mile of downtown, to the extent we can encourage them to feel like they can safely not drive downtown, that helps solve our parking situation as well. Um, if we're trying to free up capacity for the many visitors who come to downtown and make it safer for people to say, I'm just going to bike downtown or, or walk or transit. You know, we are working on some transit improvements as well. Um, the crosstown bus, uh, sounds great and people were excited about it. Um, I would say the ridership has been less than stellar. Um, there hasn't been very strong ridership. Um, so, um, they're going to tweak the timing a little bit to see if that helps. Um, but again, anything we can also do, uh, to take, you know, Zip Cars, we've added Zip Cars. We're looking at, we're part of a regional bike sharing, uh, initiative with Amherst, Holyoke and Springfield. Um, so we are looking at alternatives to try to get local folks out of their cars and hopefully free up, um, space in the parking system as well.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming. So, we have.
What? I want to go back over there again.
Items.
No shockings.
Or, and it's important to, 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 to just to take up this weight.
Still, still thinking about, you know, the primary one they recommended.
Um, right. Is anyone blanking in?
And again, those are all things, uh, reprogramming the machines.
Appointments to, reappointments to the disability commission in the field.
September, October, for the holidays.
And avenues to the top of the phone, then we saw a little avenue.
So.
Disability.
So, I'm still waiting that. I've gone out around and talked to a lot of people downtown. You know, the, the eight o'clock.
And also continue to be a voice for the number of the commission and individual citizens.
I just don't know if the benefit is really there.
And continue finding sites and needs of the food assets.
So if I'm parking on Center Street, I can only park until six, but if I park on Main Street, I have to park till, you know, I have to pay till eight or no. How, we're such a small downtown. It might create confusion. Like, why am I on Strong Avenue and I pay until six, but if I'm on Main Street?
She's a resident in Northampton and she would like to do more to our, to our city. And she thinks this is the right place that she can really talk to the most. Uh, she's been highly involved in the disability community professionally and personally for the whole of the years. Professionally, she served as program director of Stravas, CIO, as certain of the directors.
No, no, I think that would, that would be a higher level.
And, and now her staff is organized, manageable. And she has worked in the medical field as a registered therapist, therapist at a basic medical center. And she has a working knowledge of ADA and the standards and regulations of the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board, and that's really correct.
A dollar now.
Um, so I guess we can take them all as a group and focus like on the poetic.
Oh, sure. But I just, I spoke to Mr. Chriskey about his reappointment to the central business architecture today. Uh, it's reappointed, obviously, but we talked about his extensive experience, um, in Fairfax, County, Virginia, for example, doing lots of historic district work and exactly some very experienced and well-qualified person. You know, like, with their sort of policy rationale.
Yes, uh, for housing partnership, I spoke to, to Greta Haggis, who's a person, she's assisted director of development at Safe Passage. So she brings to, she would bring to the housing partnership her sensitivity to the housing needs for that population. Uh, and she's very passionate about it. She also would bring to the housing partnership her concern about worker housing. She used an example. It's, it's, it's tough sometimes for someone working at a nonprofit organization in town, getting a decent salary, not a lot to, to, to make ends meet with the housing needs. So she would bring both of those perspectives. It would be a very enthusiastic new participant. The second person, Gordon Shaw is up for reappointment. He's been chair. Two days, he and I have played telephone patties, calling me here now. So I haven't spoken to him. But, uh, a, a reappointment of chair, he's, he's highly regarded. I'm sure, having, having spoken, I would only confirm my sensitivity to a good reappointment.
Okay. And, um, I actually reviewed the materials we received from Charles Flapacki and Janice Larson. Both reappointments to the Board of Registars and both gave solid reasons for their continued participation. Keenly interested in elections and those being forward there. So. Um, so I'll ask, do we, do we want a, uh?
Yeah, I, I, um, that would make a positive recommendation for the minister.
I second.
Moved and seconded? Okay. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close extensions. So those will go as a group with a positive recommendation to the full city council. And that brings us to, um, any discussion about upcoming department presentations? We have, we have a blank spot for, we could, we could choose not to meet in August because neither Parks and Rec or Veteran Services were able to present.
I think you're going to be having some appointments coming forward on August 14th to the council on July 14th, so.
So we will have to meet at any rate. Um, well, we don't.
They have that. We could always do it before, send it out for them. All right.
Yeah, we could.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Any, uh, suggestions? Is that first?
I don't think, Councilor Hill and I talked about Maury. We are short one person on the Commission of Disabilities.
Okay.
And we need another person in order to keep the form going.
Okay.
Okay. And we just approved one reappointment. Do we have anyone, which you do know, Judith Housen, Kristen? The husband, I don't know what she, Paige, but, okay, this family, highly recommended to be on the committee. We don't have another meeting now. So it would have to come to City Council in July for a recommendation to our committee.
Oh, okay.
Refer.
So we're going to have a, we're going to have a committee meeting within that city council meeting in, in July?
I think, I think what Council LeBarge is suggesting is you can't discuss it within seven days. So it will be referred out on July 14th and at your August meeting that you will have a, have a meeting before the meeting.
You mean at our August City Council meeting? That's in the August 14th or whatever?
August 18th.
Eighteen? Okay.
Rather than meet on the first.
Actually, rather than meet on the first, since we don't have any presentation. I mean, if we could, we could do that.
I would just suggest, if I may, that like we did last time, we, this is a little complicated. We can't be, come be in the city council in disaffirmability.
Um, that's good.
That way it's just.
Right, I don't see.
Yep.
I can check with Council Dwight.
Yeah.
That would make sense. Plus, I like the idea of not meeting on the first, so I'm going to have difficulty making that.
Okay.
Great.
So we're planning on postponing the meeting of the first to happen on the 18th, the 14th of July.
Okay, that's important.
On the day of our city council meeting.
At what time?
During the city council meeting. We're going to, like we've done before, we're going to, um, just adjourn and go into our subcommittee and then get back into the regular council.
Okay. I listed the rest of those areas because I wasn't sure if you wanted the Forbes Library to still come considering that they had just presented at the budget hearing.
That's right.
And also, um, I was looking for, uh, topics that you wanted to have forward to the Building Commissioner and to potentially Lilly Library if you wanted them to come on, in October.
So can people forward those questions directly to Pam if they have them?
Sure. On, on what?
On either, uh, around the Lilly Library or, um, the other couple of, or Building Commissioner for, for the upcoming meetings that we have. If you have some specific questions. Yeah.
So, so did you want me to still have the Forbes Library come?
Um, I don't know that we need to. We just, you said we did just hear, was everyone at that budget hearing?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. We did hear from the receptionist.
We did some, perhaps some.
Maybe not.
Okay. Yeah, I think not. All right. So we have a few minutes, but we adjourn now. You can take a moment.
Move to adjourn in a second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Thank you.